I think for clarity's sake, item eight, recycling transfer station hours, the discussion we had. It, it says, we checked with the attorney, transfer station hours can be permanent, permanent with fixed hours. But we talked about the period of time specifically Memorial Day to Labor Day. And that isn't anywhere in this statement. I didn't see it later on. But do we talk about it again? I was looking for it and I didn't see it. I just want to, because that was, that was the specific change I thought we made. And I didn't see it anywhere. So, you know, whether it's in some other discussion, but we could put it right here.
We can put it, yeah, in the, in the minutes that.
I kind of thought it was during informal.
Yeah.
That we talked about.
We did talk about it. Because I went on, like I told you about how we, how I spoke with their town attorney.
And you said we didn't need to vote on it, but I think we did, we did decide it was going to be Memorial Day to Labor Day.
We did, we did. That was the consensus.
I just didn't see that anywhere. And I thought that was important.
Okay, we'll add that in.
Yeah, the other one was in item nine. I remember I, we were talking about the American Restaurant Plan Funds and specifically the Engine Two. But in that discussion, I also brought up, you know, I just expressed concern that we still needed to do something with the equipment that's housed under one roof. But it doesn't specifically say that I was talking about the town garage and the equipment. So I think maybe after that sentence, John Dillon again expressed concern about the equipment being housed under one roof. You could say at the town garage, and that would be sufficient. Okay. That's it. That's all I have.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I make a motion. We approve the minutes as amended.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. John, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Thank you all. Thank you, John. The next item is the acceptance of tonight's agenda. I don't have any changes, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
I'll make that motion before you change your mind.
I second that.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Bobby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Under communications and correspondence this evening, I forget who, one of the, it was either Bobby or Sean. But what have you brought to my attention that it is the month of October and October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month? And I checked with Michelle, my assistant at Town Hall, and I was shocked that we actually have never done a proclamation in the month of October for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So I have a proclamation here from the Board of Selectmen. I'm not sure if one of the selectmen would like to read it. I can read it if not.
Let me do it.
You want to read it?
Sure. Proclamation, National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas the month of October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is an annual campaign to increase awareness of this disease. And whereas breast cancer remains the second leading cause of cancer deaths among women. And both men and women should be aware that age, genetics, and family history are factors that can contribute to the risk of developing this disease. And whereas significant strides in the fight against this devastating disease have been made through medical advances, preventative programs, and quality health care. And whereas individuals may help reduce this risk of breast cancer through regular, regular self-exams, clinical breast exams and mammograms are vital since treatments are most effective when breast cancer is detected early. And whereas we display pink ribbons and wear pink clothing to raise awareness. We also celebrate survivorship, honoring those who have dedicated their lives to research, education, and treatment. We acknowledge those who have lost their courageous battle. And whereas we call for the support for increased access to screenings and care and to promote the innovative research that will usher in a new era in the fight against breast cancer. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Ryan J. Curley, First Selectman of the Town of Portland, Connecticut, hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and encourage our citizens, businesses, educators, and volunteers to support activities and programs that will increase breast cancer awareness and the importance of early detection, diagnosis, and treatment. To witness whereof, I do hereby set my hand and cause the seal of Portland to be affixed this nineteenth day of October in the year 2022 by Ryan J. Curley, First Selectman, Town of Portland, Connecticut, with Board of Selectmen John H. Dillon, Michael S. Hernandez, Robert W. Hetrick Jr., Sean P. Manning, Michael A. Pelton, and Ralph R. Zampano.
Thank you. Thanks, John. It is important this month.
Absolutely.
That's all I have under communications and correspondence. So we'll move on to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience for public comment? Is there anyone in the chat? Nothing in the chat. All right. It is our second meeting of the month. And that means it is our monthly report from the Solidarity Committee. April and Noel are here today, so thank you both for coming.
Hi. So the Solidarity Committee has been this month honoring our first responders in town. We have so far honored our police officers, our CERT team, and then today was Public Works. That'll be in the River East this weekend. We have also placed the thank you signs outside each of the departments. And the solidarity didn't go up next to police stations. That was the only thing that didn't happen. And then we are still working on our resource pamphlet. And that should be out after the November meeting. And then just so we know, the committee is looking for new members, Noel, myself. We both have resigned after the November meeting. So if anybody's interested in joining the committee, they're going to be needing some more members.
April, thank you. And I just want to thank you both for, for all your work on this committee. And I'm assuming the fire department's next after?
Our department's next week.
Okay. And I just, just for myself, I would love, I see the posts on the Portland Community page. They're awesome. I, I'd like to share them on my page. I just don't know how to do that because you can't share from the community.
Right. Yeah, I can send them all to you. I was actually planning on printing them all out and then sending the picture to each of the different departments that we have of them also.
Awesome. Okay, yeah, I want to figure out how to do that. So, yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, under old business, we have two guests here this evening. We have Rob Clea and we have Chris Palmer. And they've come tonight to, Alan Savins couldn't join. You may remember Alan from, I think it was December. You guys can come on up, but, but we're talking about the transfer station and specifically the solar panels installed at the transfer station. And we've run into some hiccups the past, you know, couple of times, but we're feeling good about this time, right?
Thank you, First Selectman Curley and members of the Board of Selectmen. I'm Rob Clea from Clea Sustainability Advisors, and with me is Chris Palmer from CSW Energy. And we're your town's consultants on the deployment of clean energy. And it is nice to be back here. And hopefully we have, we're going to do a presentation for you today at the invitation of the First Selectmen and after a real good meeting with the Clean Energy Task Force and Andy Bauer on your options going forward for the landfill and the solar arrays there. So as we're bringing up the PowerPoint, yeah, a file. Terrific. We'll go to the next one. Thank you. So we have two main things to talk about. First, we're going to go over, there are two primary state incentive programs that help towns like yours deploy solar at their own sort of town facilities and landfills in particular. And then we'll sort of walk through the next steps. The punchline here is that we're proposing that we go back out to RFP to get a competitive set of proposals from the developer community in both options for your landfill. So have the developer community present to the town these, the incentives and the financial benefits to the town if they chose to go on either of the paths, which are available through the state incentive programs. A little more on that in just a moment. So the next slide, please. Thank you. One more. So there are two primary state incentive programs. The first one is one that we had talked about before. It's what we went out for in our original RFP last year. It's called the Shared Clean Energy Facilities Program. In this program, the town is in a scenario where they have the opportunity to make money by leasing the landfill for 20 years to a solar developer. So you lease the landfill. You can get lease payments for 20 years. You can get payments in either property tax, payments in lieu of property tax. And that combination over that 20 years is the potential financial benefit to the town. The power is, doesn't go to the town. It doesn't reduce your electric bills. It goes straight into the grid and is actually managed by the utility, Eversource in this instance, who actually benefits from the use of that power through a fairly complicated mechanism that they have. This is now the, we're going to be entering in the fourth year of this competitive program. And in the slide, I gave an update of what happened last year. So last year, there were 16 bids for Eversource Territory. Fifteen of them were solar. One was a fuel cell. There were only six winners out of the 16, and they were all solar. And of those winners, there was actually one winning landfill in last year's bid process. Interestingly, from the legislative action this past year, the pool of opportunity in this program has now doubled. So what used to be a 20-megawatt program in Eversource Territory for this coming year will be a 40-megawatt program, which is beneficial to the town that there will be, in this competitive procurement process, they basically take in all the bids. They have their megawatt total they can reach, and they go down the list in literally an Excel spreadsheet to that point where they fill, in this case, 40 megawatts of opportunity. So this is a, the other sort of thing to note, which we've explained, I think, before. Landfills have a bid preference. So they are an attractive place for solar developers because in this spreadsheet of the prices of the potential bidders, landfills get a 20% bid preference. So their $100 bid, per megawatt hour bid, is treated as if it were only $80. So it moves up that spreadsheet with that 20% bid preference. Next slide, please. The other large program in the state, and this one is actually new as of last year, is called the Non-Residential Program, which for the Town of Portland would be an opportunity to save money on your electric bills. So in this scenario, the solar array would generate electricity that because you are a town, towns, the state, and agricultural landowners have an opportunity to participate in what's called virtual net metering, or VNM in the slides. And that means that all of the electricity that is generated at your landfill in essence generates kilowatt hours. And you look at all of the electric bills in town, and you can literally roll back all those bills based on the kilowatt hours that are produced at the landfill virtually. So the landfill, there's not much there. It's a transfer station. But it can power your sewage treatment plant, your, the lights here, your streetlights, your schools, et cetera. And you would go through a list of your major energy producer, energy consumer, sorry, in town and have the production of that landfill literally show up as a bill credit, a reduction on your electric bills at up to basically 1,000 of your electric billing accounts. So it's a, a program that has that saving money opportunity using your landfill to reduce your townwide electric bills. One of the interesting distinctions, oh, so again, this same, this program also has that 20% bid preference for landfills. So again, a landfill is an attractive place to do this work. The policy behind that is they'd rather have solar on landfills or brownfields or instead of cutting down forests, trees, or taking up farmland. This was the first year of the program last year in Eversource. There were 45 large solar bids in Eversource. 10 were winners. The program is actually so new that they haven't finished giving out all of the incentives. So the bid pricing is still confidential and will be for a little while. But there were three winning landfills in this program last year. And again, because of a new state law, the pool of opportunity has basically doubled. It's a little confusing in, in this one because they've also not only doubled the amount of opportunity, they've also allowed for much larger solar arrays, up to five megawatts, which is not your landfill situation. That said, there are going to be about 24 megawatts of opportunity in Eversource Territory for the size of solar array that you would have at your landfill. So next slide. So we tried to present, and I believe you'll have all this in information, either in your packets or.
It was sent to everyone.
Wonderful. So what are the differences between the two programs? Well, first of all, where does the electricity go? In that shared clean energy, the SCF program, it goes out to the grid and Eversource manages who benefits from it. In the virtual net metering program, it is virtually yours. It is yours for the town to take advantage of in reducing all of your bills. What type of agreement or sort of instrument do you enter into? Again, for the SCF program, the first program, you're leasing your landfill. You go through all of your town processes about leasing your land for 20 years. In the virtual net metering, you're in essence buying the energy or that negative energy or that sort of bill credit from the solar developer. There is a key distinction in the two programs. The SCF program, and this is what got us tripped up last year, has some extra requirements regarding the slope of the land on which the solar array is built, largely because unfortunately my former agency has gotten involved in that and they wanted to have extreme limits on solar on hillier or, or, you know, steeper slopes. Unfortunately, as we talked about last time we were here, landfills are designed as a little hill when they have slopes on them. So we have a estimate, the array size in the SCF program is probably, or I'll flip it around. In the virtual net metering program, you can do an array about 33% larger. You can take advantage of those slopes. Now, the main concern is water runoff and stone water runoff. Any solar developer has to get an actual permit to do it, and they have to go through that permitting process. It's just the first program has this bar on very sloopy hillsides. The timing, this is why we're here today. These programs are going to go live in early spring of 2023. Our goal is to get to the point where you're comfortable with us running an RFP to get that partner for Portland to participate in those programs next year. The SCF program is in March. The virtual net metering program is probably in February, but they haven't released the precise date yet. Next slide, and this, we're almost there. So our proposal to the town is sort of graphically represented here. You're sitting in the middle of that roundabout, that Portland has the opportunity to go to the market and say in a request for proposals to get competitive pricing, tell us, market, what your best pricing and your benefits to the town are for either program. And let then the town decide, okay, we can see a proposal for the SCF program, which will be a long-term 20-year lease at fixed payments and tax payments. You can add all those up over 20 years and get to a final dollar amount of how much that benefit to the town from leasing your landfill, which you're not currently, space you're not currently using. We will also ask the marketplace, tell us what's the benefit to the town from virtual net metering. How much can the town save over 20 years by having this electricity produced at the landfill being credited and reducing all the costs on your, 1,000 of your local accounts? The police, the fire station, the public works, the lights, the streetlights, et cetera. And ask the marketplace to offer both options. In essence, they're, they're both building a solar array. It's just a question of where the money is either coming to you as in a lease and tax payment, or it's coming to you as a bill credit. And it'll be interesting to see from the market. We don't want to prejudge which path. So we want to offer that to the marketplace to present to you what they believe is the, the highest benefit they can present to the town. And again, as I mentioned earlier, if that shared clean energy, the first one that has those slope restrictions would be about a one and a half to one and three-quarter megawatts DC, the virtual net metering array will likely be about a third larger. Next slide. The reason we're here is because once you get that dance partner through the RFP process, you also have all of your town processes to have a Board of Selectmen vote, public hearings, special town meeting, because it is, both of them will involve a lease of the, you know, a use of your, your property for a long term, and you have all of your required processes there. So we wanted to make sure there's enough time to do all of those things in the right order, in the right process in order to be ready for next year's competitive procurements. So one more slide forward, one more after that. And so that's where we are. We're here today sort of presenting this opportunity to basically go to the market and educate us and to say, here are your options for solar. Here's how much the town stands to either make money in terms of lease payments or save money in terms of bill credits and see what the, the market has to offer in that regard. And then go through the processes of reviewing that, making a decision, and hopefully going ahead with solar to your landfill. And I will pause there. The next slide just says thank you, and it will definitely open up to questions. And the reason I bring Chris is because he can answer any of the technical questions. He's our engineering expert on the team. So anything related to that, he's happy to jump in on.
I know we talked about the last time we were in here, and I forgot about, what is our degree of slope on that landfill?
This is why Chris is here. Excellent.
So we did, we did some layouts. And I don't know if we can cast these out here, but basically that 30% restriction, or that 30% gain you see from SCF to VNM is because there's about 30% of the property has a slope that's within that 15-degree maximum allowance that the SCF program has. You, I will say, on that limitation, we've looked at all of the racking products, which are the products that will hold the modules in place. And they're all able to, to be mounted within almost the entirety of the slope on that, on that site. So we don't see that as being an issue in terms of being able to develop those lands.
But the agency in its wisdom has said they don't want any part of your project to have those slopes above 15%. So there is about a third of the landfill site is at that 15% and above slope range.
And if I recall from the last time we spoke, the lease agreement, the money that we generate that we benefit from the lease agreement is specifically based on the number of panels that are there. So we obviously lose some revenue because we lose panels due to the slope in that one option, right?
In that one option, yes. So if they could have put more panels, it would be, you know, the amount they're paying you per, per watt that they're, they're generating.
I guess that was my question. So, so with the SCF, it's a fixed amount. It's a fixed lease, right? 20 years. So the town would know essentially every year what we'd be getting in revenue ahead of time. But with the virtual net metering, you know, energy rates can rise, right? Is that factored in? So, you know, when you project, when you do the calculations, are you, are you estimating, you know, 15, 20 years down the line, what, what are energy costs going to be? And does that factor into what we're saving, you know, which?
Yeah, sure. So, you know, historically, what we see is the utility rates have increased about 3% year over year. You know, that changes. You know, some years we'll see six or 10 or zero. But year over year, it's about 3%. So when we receive those bids in on the VNM side, and they'll be presenting us with basically a price per kilowatt hour that they're willing to sell the power to the town for, or sell those credits to the town for. You know, what we'll do is we'll model that over the 20-year life of that power purchase agreement and take into consideration that year over year, we can expect about a 3% increase on the utility costs while you'll have a flat new rate from the VNM provider. That'll be fixed over that 20-year period. So you'll see savings increase over that 20-year period because of the rising cost from the utility.
Thank you. That was my question. What do you guys think?
I'd like to see the, the results of the RFP. I'm curious to see what the presentations will be.
So are we? Yes.
Yeah. I mean, we certainly would like to get, what are the numbers for each, so we could judge what kind of a savings.
And that's the value of having the RFP ask the market, not limited to one program or the other, just, you know, and some bidders maybe will probably bid alternates. And they'll say, if we were doing this under SCF, we would pay you this type of lease payment and tax payment over the 20 years. It would look like this. If we were the same developer, we probably would have bid alternate saying, if we're doing it under the virtual net metering, it would be this type of, you know, power purchase agreement rate. And they will, will do that 20-year calculation of the overall value of that bill savings over 20 years. And then you, then it's presented to the town to say which they want to go. Now, we also, in that process, the price will be obviously a large part of that and the benefits to the town. There's also the professionalism of the developer, their experience of working on landfills. Those will all be put into the RFP as the types of criteria that we are evaluating. Just, you don't want. Just, you don't want necessarily the one who's the best price but has never done it before. The other part of the analysis is we're going to ask for their confidential projected future bid in those competitive programs. So that's the other sort of lever, and I think we've talked about this as a seesaw before. They're coming to you with a proposal and a suggested bid price. I mean, you evaluate that bid price and its likelihood to be in the winner circle. Because again, the benefit to the town is great, but if they're bidding at the ceiling and they're not likely to end up in the winner circle, you, you would go through this process with a dance partner that has two left feet and it's going to trip in the, in the actual competitive procurement.
Now, I've been involved in some requests for proposals in my prior life. And I know in some cases, they would have a different mix on how you balance out your scoring in the proposal. Exactly what you're saying, you may decide that you want to put a heavier weight on the, the price or you may want to put a heavier weight on their past practice or their ability or the product they're, they're providing. And I assume that's something that you'll take into consideration as you develop the RFP.
Yeah, that's right. We'll have a list in the RFP. We'll kind of list out all the criteria that we'll be judging the bidders on. So it's not just going to be price, it's going to be those other things like what their bid preference or their suggested bid values are, you know, their experience on landfills and stuff.
Price is important, but you can get burned too.
That's right.
Now, I know you had it in there. What, what is the, the hit the street date for the RFP that you're estimating?
For our, our town RFP, we'd like to go out early November. So that's why we're here tonight. Make sure that we have, I, I'm not sure for a second that this was something that was to be voted on. We just wanted to make sure that we wanted all of your input and suggestions before we do it. Now, as you already mentioned, this is just to go out to the RFP. This isn't, you're not committing to any particular developer at this. We'll come back for, for that side of things.
I think we can take a vote tonight just to, just to be safe. One question. So there is a chance that the town might get selected for SCAP, right? But not virtual net metering or vice versa, right? With this?
So we would, through the RFP, we would see the two different, you know, program paths. You can only choose one. So if you're bidding this landfill into the SCAP program, you can't also bid it into the virtual net metering program. They have, that's the state rules. You can only choose one program or the other. And then second, what I think you're also getting at, there's a, a chance we go through the, the, the process, we're weighting all of our factors. We think we have a good developer. We think we have a good bid price. And then there's 30 other bidders who would beat us. And so there is no guarantee in that competitive procurement process that you're going to have a winner. So this is going to be part of that interesting and hard, frankly, conversation on weighting the, the dollar benefits, which are, are real and then we want to maximize the benefit to the town versus that risk that you're trying to get a little too much and then you fall out of the, that winner circle. But it's, it's a good sort of, you know, important sort of caveat to note that those are competitive procurement price, procurement processes. And we don't know how many bidders are going to be out there. That said, landfill with the 20% bid preference and the program now doubled in size means that pool is a little lar, is, is larger for year two. All bodes better than year one, frankly. Plus they're working, they worked out some of the kinks of year one.
So I understand obviously the process. I, I guess from my standpoint, I really would hope that the virtual metering went out because then I could see us using the trend, the, the land, which is going to have no other use. We'll at least get 30% more panels up there to be used rather than wasted because it's dead, dead space. You're not going to use it for anything else at this point. So it would be nice to be able to, having benefited for many years now from solar panels, I would like to see us do the same. But obviously you gotta look at what the numbers come back to.
And, and, and you're, you're, we, we're probably there with you, but we want to make sure we look at the numbers and, and see. There is also the, that certainty of knowing that you're just getting that rent, that rent and tax check, you know, every month for 20 years. There's something that is, can be a bit, you know, comforting about that as well. So we want to just make sure that you add all those options on the table. We'll present recommendations, but we wanted to, to give you that power to make those choices.
Just one other question. I'm sure the answer, I know the answer, but I'm not going to assume. In either option, the, the vendor, for example, that you select, they are required not only to install, but to maintain, correct?
That's right. Yeah, the part of their obligation will be to monitor and maintain the system over the life of the agreement. And, you know, they have a financial incentive to do so because, you know, if, if they keep the system up and operating at its peak performance, they're going to be selling more power to the utility company under SCAP or selling more power to you under VNM. So they're motivated to do.
And that's the question, because if it, if we had leased them under the SCAP program, if they, if they got a problem with the panels and they're not fixing it, no skin off our nose, we're still getting the revenue. But if we're benefiting from those panels and they have a problem, I want to make sure that those panels are remediated immediately, you know? And I, I think that's, as I see it, that may be one of the, the big differences. You're kind of relying upon them if you have a problem. And those panels go down for a day or two, you're losing a lot of potential energy.
You are, but so are they. So they're, they also.
Yeah, I agree.
Are both for 20 years?
Yes.
Yep, that's right.
The, the virtual net metering would have an option for extension, usually of two, five-year terms in addition. It won't have the same subsidy, but at that point in time, it, it would be an option and it might make financial sense just to keep it, you know, keep it running even though they're out of. The, the state incentives only run 20 years. The, the one where they're leasing the property, probably less of an incentive for that extension past 20 years. Because the power is just going to the state. So I'm not, I'm not sure how that would, that one would be a little less likely.
And at the end of the program, they're responsible for removal, everything and putting it back the way it was?
Yep, that's right.
What's nice about these panels, they sort of float on concrete blocks on, because you can't, it's a landfill, you don't want to poke holes in it. So they're.
Yeah, it's a, it's a balsed system that'll sit on top of the surface of the, of the landfill cap.
So I have a question, just trying to understand how this would be set up. Now, I look at it now, I've had my panels for a number of years and the technology has changed. And I would assume 20 years from now, somewhere in there, that the technologies can continue to improve and change. I don't know, how, how does that work? This is just a general question, trying to understand these situations where, you know, you've come up with panels that are, you know, 10 times more effective, like they, whoever's, if you're leasing, I mean, either way, they want to be able to garner as much power as they want because they make money on it. I mean, how does that work if there was the technology jump? That makes them want to make a change out of the panels?
Yeah, so the, the kind of limiting factor there is on the, the utility side, which they're looking at the AC output of the inverters. And so from their perspective, there's a cap they're going to set on how much AC power you can push onto the grid. So, you know, what could happen down the road, say panels need to be replaced or something. You know, I could see wattage output of each panel is going to come down. So maybe some higher wattage panels could go in and reduce the footprint a little bit. But still, when they're in the term of the contract, they're, they're restricted to the inverter size, so the AC size, based on their agreements with the utility company. So they won't be able to come in and, you know, increase inverter size because they're going to have operating agreements in place with the utility company that basically say how many kilowatts of power they're allowed to push into the grid at a given time.
Thank you for asking. I learned something new too. You guys ask terrific questions. You should know that.
What would the timeframe be after the bid process for this to get started?
So the internal sort of RFP process would be facilitated from November. Selections probably four to six weeks after that to then get us into your calendar to do all the appropriate first selectment votes. The, I don't know if we need another 824 approval for planning and zoning, but we need our public hearing and special town meeting because it's a long-term lease. That all gets us into the programs, which are in February or March of 2023. They would have decisions probably June-ish. I don't, you know, that's about where they were this first year. So summer of 2023, then a little bit of time for contracting with the utilities. Then you're off to the races after that. And on the development side, I'll let, I'll pass.
Yeah, I would say, you know, after that, a project of this size, once it gets into the full design and permitting and approval process to the point where we're actually constructed, I would say we're looking at really a 20, late 2024, where a point where we're turning a system on. You know, the, the design and permitting for this is going to take probably six months alone. So it'll take that period of time. After that, then they'll mobilize the site. And I would say that'll probably be about a three-month window or so. So I would, I would think we're looking at end of 2024 when we're really going to be turning the system on and making power.
And under both the programs, I think you have three years from that award until that turnout. So that's, and what you have is us. So we are your owners. We moved from RFP administrators into owners rep during that phase of the construction. We're holding them accountable to the contract. We're making sure that they're coordinated with your public works and your schedule and the, it's an open and operating transfer station. Making sure all those sort of things are seamless. Plus Chris and his team are ensuring that they did one thing. They're not swapping something else in and the technology and, and et cetera. But that's the service that we continue to provide to the town all the way through that. Turn the light, not the light on, but flip, flip the switch on. Again, don't have me do the technicals.
So should we make a motion?
I think we should.
Would someone like to make the motion?
Sure. What do you want it to be?
I think you should move to enter, move to have, would it be Clee Energy that would be doing the RFP?
It's, it's both, but the Clee Sustainability.
Clee Sustainability and CSW.
Facilitate an RFP for your landfill.
Facilitate two of, is it two?
It's one RFP with the two programs.
Okay, perfect. There you go.
What he said. Make a motion for Clee Energy and Clee Sustainability to move forward with the RFP for the solar panels at the transfer station.
It's CSW.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'll second that much.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Thank you, guys. And also Andy Bowers here, sorry, Andy, with our Clean Energy Task Force. Did you have anything to add?
Don't be sorry for that. No, these guys, you know, welcome.
Okay. All right, thanks, Andy.
I know Ralph is surprised, but.
Thank you all again, terrific questions. And we'll be back hopefully with some results of the RFP in a month.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. All right. Next up on the agenda is a, to continuing the conversation that this board had at our first meeting this month on ARPA funding, American Rescue Plan funding and a potential purchase of a replacement for fire engine number two. And Chief Shea is here this evening. There he is. How you doing? So Bob, if, if you wouldn't mind coming up, I, we, we talked last meeting at, you know, for a decent amount of time on this. I know that there is a need in the, in the fire department, particularly with this engine two. And, you know, I, I think there was consensus from the board that looking at potentially using American Rescue funds as a way to pay for a need like this would, would be beneficial because this is something that we're probably going to have to get no matter what. I'm not mistaken. So it's either we pay now or pay later, right?
Yeah, we do. I mean, we've, for the history of replacing our apparatus over the past 15 to 20 years that I've been part of that, you know, we've had a good run at trying to stay ahead of the curve, but it's getting difficult. And, you know, way back when we bought our ladder truck, which is coming up on 14 years old, if you can believe that or not. You know, we entered into these abilities or these programs to lease, especially that equipment that, it always, every time I stand here. That we've had the opportunity to kind of spread those large purchases over a number of years. And we really had our first one with our ladder truck. And I think it's a great benefit to taxpayers to be able to do that when you, you know, you're looking at purchases in, in, in the area of five to six, seven, eight, $100,000 that, you know, that particular equipment and/or vehicle is going to last, you know, an average of 20 years. So I think, you know, spreading those payments out is much less burden on our taxpayers. And I was always in favor of that. And I think, you know, we've done a good job of that over the past years. But things have changed so much in the last few years that we know that we have two engines that are on their mark to be replaced in the next three years. And when we replaced, I replaced, or I was part of replacing our first engine and our first ladder truck. We're, we're looking at costs now that are increasing 7% a month. And when I say that, it's hard to even comprehend that, especially for someone that's in the engineering field and know a lot about materials because of my past life of building things. We just spent two and a half days out in Illinois accepting our tanker truck. And I will tell you that we are extremely lucky in town to have signed a contract with a developer of a fire truck who spent millions of dollars at the very beginning of COVID to buy material, stainless steel, enough to be able to hold his prices for the past year and a half to two years. That material in his yard is basically coming to an end and he hasn't received any new stainless in over nine months. So there's where we are as far as building things such as, it really falls into anything that has to be built. So we're really concerned now that we look at our apparatus, the years of our apparatus. In particular, engine two, we're looking at a 1998 vehicle. Based on the past 10-year statistics, that vehicle runs to about 98% of all of our calls that an engine of that type is needed at, which is quite a few. Prior to that, it ran to 100% because we didn't have, that was the only engine in town that we had that could actually fit a full crew of firefighters. Most of our other apparatus was two and three-seaters, which now to be compliant, to be able to really respond, we need to be able to outfit a fire truck to be able to do the job of interior firefighting with a large enough crew, if that's the only crew that responds, two in, two out, plus an operator. So, you know, we've transitioned and moved forward with that, with the, the help of the public to be able to do that with our engines. But we're in this situation now that we're really concerned. I mean, if you were to look at funding in a lease program, you know, we're at $850,000 now. When I bought engine one seven years ago, it was 410. So the increase is just compounding monthly. Spartan, who is probably one of the leader in the cab and chassis portion of a fire truck, which we have many of and that's kind of the type of engines that we build. There's many others, but they all fall in line. Just sent us a letter last Thursday that they are increasing the cost of their 7% increase for the month of October. And they expect another increase for every month until something settles. So I got in a long discussion out in Illinois. You just related to the market and where we could see the possibility of it stabilizing. And if there's a possibility that we will start to see some of that come back. And in that type of manufacturing, they do feel that it's going to stabilize at some point, maybe a year from now, year and a half or two years. They don't believe they're going to see a reduction because that's the catch-up factor. And everything that's happening in the world today, especially related to materials, which we see with this awful war, is going to affect that for a great amount of time. So. So, most of our engines are made of stainless steel now. It's a difficult metal to buy, particularly now, just because of the cost to manufacture and the materials issues that we're having. And not only that, it's the, the whole distribution of those products. So, I think it's really important for you to really take a look at the ways to do this and how it's going to affect the taxpayers. You have an opportunity here where there's money in the rescue plan that we're fortunate enough to get as a town. It's our second installment. We made some really good selections. I think the first time to put some of that into infrastructure. You still have the opportunity to do other things as well. But your public safety is going to be a difficult thing, I think, for this board and, and other boards moving forward to be able to find a way to fund that without a huge impact on the taxpayers. If you were to lease, which you, you know, that's going to be a very difficult thing to do because right now, it's a minimum of four hundred and eighty days to build a truck. I don't know really where that's going to be moving forward, even in six months. So, with that said, we had, you know, we're in a lease program now that the tanker was purchased on, which was a great program. But we've extended that closeout by almost six months, just for this particular vehicle and a few other ones that came in through the highway department. So, that's a very difficult thing to do on the finance side. You'd have to probably talk to Tom Robinson a little more about that. But you're looking at July of next year, before you can even entertain to try to begin and go into a contract for a truck, and you could be looking at that seven percent a month, which is anywhere from, you know, seven to eight thousand dollars a month increase over that six or eight-month period of time. So, you know, you could be looking at big numbers. Glastonbury.
You mentioned you have another engine that needs to be replaced too, in addition to the one we're talking about.
Within three years. So, engine three up on the hill is older, but based on usage, it seems to be in better shape. And it's not the workhorse particularly of the department, although it's critical to be on the hill because it carries more water. That's for sure. So, the tanker, although for thirty-six years, thirty-five years, we've carried water with it and really haven't done much suppression with that particular unit. The new tanker is technically a fire truck. It's got a twelve-fifty gallon pump. It's got crosslays to fight fire. So, it's putting another vehicle into our arsenal that's going to provide much more than just carrying water in the country. We're going to actually be able to drive it up and do some work with three thousand gallons of water like we would with that engine. So, those are the better things that are happening with technology. And we're trying to build our trucks to that standard. But the days of us sitting down and designing a truck, for the years that I've done that, those are gone. You're literally picking a truck that's coming off an engineer's table, saying, these are the trucks that are available this month. And if you would like one, you need to give me a contract. And then you build it from there. There's no more designing, it's really, you're picking from almost a cooker, cookie cutter type of situation because they can't do it anymore. They just can't do it.
With the future replacement of engine three, could the tanker be the tanker and the engine at company three?
No, because we need to be able to, we need a certain amount of gallons on the hill for our ISO, which is four thousand. So, we can't carry that. That, we could, we could have made a tanker to carry that, but then I would have come to you for a four-million-dollar firehouse to put it in because it won't fit. So, we're very restricted as well in the country of what we can, we can house up there with our existing firehouse. So, the biggest part of this design with the tanker that, you know, we were just able to purchase and took a year and a half to build was size. Being able to keep the water on it to today's specs and today's chassis sizes and fitted in that firehouse with a ten-foot ceiling requirement, which was hard, but we were able to do it. So, you have one point eight million dollars at, at the current cost today. Two engines is one point eight million dollars. You have a ladder truck that's going to be due in another seven to ten. The current ladder trucks that, if I was to build the ladder truck today, we asked, single-axle quint that we built for six hundred and eighty thousand dollars, it's one point seven million. So, you know, it's just hard for us to even comprehend. So, we got into these discussions a few months ago, and we got really concerned. And that's why, you know, we started to make sure that you were aware of that because you have a lot to think about. And your fleet, although you see a lot of new, there's an awful lot of old. I can look down at my sheet here and, you know, we start at thirty-seven years old, which is the tanker we're replacing now. We go to thirty-five years on our rescue, twenty-eight years on engine three, twenty-four on engine two. So, you know, we have still a lot of old stuff, but it is in good shape. It just doesn't meet the current standards as well, safety standards particularly. So. So, your number is, you know, anywhere between eight hundred and eight fifty, where it all depends on timing. And I just know that Glastonbury just signed, in particular, with their new engine, which is very similar to what we would be looking at, and they're at eight hundred. So, difficult stuff. So, there's opportunities with the rescue plan because obviously, as you know, that's part of that allowed expenditures. There's just so many different ways to fund things and trying to find those funds that, you know, leasing and, and bonds and capital are all direct impacts on taxes because they're just flatlight funding, so.
Well, these federal dollars should give us the opportunity to, in part or in whole, remove one of those expenses from that possibility.
Yeah, I mean, if you think about, you know, a lease program, which I, I know you're entertaining and looking at very closely as we discussed last year, I mean, pulling eight hundred thousand or eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of that does an awful lot of good for other departments in town that could use that funding, depending on how you look at it. Yeah. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's news. It's, it's hard to, you know, we spent a lot more time discussing these options when we were in Illinois with some of their financial people and the things that are really affecting their businesses. And some of the stuff that came back to us was pretty eye-opening on where it's going, thinking that things are going to stabilize and you're going to go backwards and get closer to maybe where you were. And they don't see that at all. They, they know stabilization is on its way. They just don't feel that. There's been so lot, so much loss in the industry that there'll be a lot of makeup time. But when you see a yard full of materials that were purchased a year and a half ago, and all that material in that yard has all holes in it ready to be built into bodies, but in the area that hasn't been fabricated or started to be built, there's nothing, that's pretty scary.
Bob, did you talk to Tom about the RFP process? Or we, is that something that, you know, this is, this is federal dollars. So, I'm assuming if we move forward, we would have to.
So, we did. We, you know, we, I mean, I've been part of that for so long. We try to buy all our equipment off a contract because it's a benefit not only for the town because there's savings there and there's a lot of different options. And there's a lot of discounts related to that, so it works out well. The fact that it's federal money means that you really have to be a little more tighter on how you do things. And it's usually what we do is usually a formal bid. But we're finding outside, and I'm trying to get as much literature as I can on that. And, you know, a lot of that information went out on the way back, and I'm looking for some responses, that there are towns and cities out there that are using, using those contracts that we used in the past with rescue plan money. And they're not going to formal bids, but they're making sure that they're using those government contracts, HGAC is one of them, to purchase those. So, if I can get that information, critical information, I think, that's going to speed up the process to the point where, you know, I mean, every day is a save, you know, saving money if this is what you, you know, want to do. So, I should have a lot more information on that in the next few days. But, because that's critical because we're finding that you would think you'd have to do it, particularly with a formal bid, no bid waivers, but now we're finding that there are contracts that are being used. So, I want to get a little more detail on that. We actually reached out to the, to some of those contract holders to find out what's happening with that.
Yeah, no, we, we got to be careful with it.
We do.
And we got to make Tom happy, too.
We do.
So, so, okay. Any, what are your thoughts, guys?
I got just two things. If you don't mind, could you email me a list of all the fire vehicles that we have with the, the year, mileage or hours, however you calculate that? I, I know you just listed off like a bunch of them, but could you?
Yeah, I don't, Mike, I have this here. I don't, I have their years here and my expecting, you know, I can get you mileage. We usually do that for capital, but I certainly can't. You'll see on fire apparatus, you won't, you'll see years, but you won't see a lot of mileage.
Yeah, I know you had said like you had thirty.
Is it engine hours instead?
There's hours. There's pump hours and stuff, but there's mileage. There's mileage on all of our apparatus.
And then, and the other thing is, engine two, how's it stand?
Physically?
In shape right now, yeah. What?
So, we've had, we've spent a lot of money on engine two. We've had a lot of pump repairs on engine two. We've had some axle work on it. We've, we are experiencing some transmission issues occasionally. So, we've put some maintenance money into engine two over the past six years, thousands of dollars. It's got some frame rotting. Yeah.
Brake issue?
It's, uh, yeah, we've had brake issues, yeah. So, you know, I mean, based on its years, it's showing its wear and tear. It's got, it's got a cab flex that's going on now a little bit where you, you take a corner, you can feel the cab kind of rolling, which is pretty standard for a truck that, that, that old and that type of make. The subframes and the cabs and stuff are built totally different now. They're kind of wrapped, so you don't see that. But we're starting to see its age. And the concern is the pump. You know, we're doing a lot of packing repairs and we have, you know, consistently leaks. And then you start to lose your GPM on your pump volume when you're pumping, when you get up into years. And then, you know, your pump now is probably seventy or eighty thousand dollars. So, if the truck goes out of service and you have to replace a pump, then, you know, you're, you're dropping a big number there.
What's the future of it? What happens if we go with the new truck?
We can sell it.
So, it's someone else's problem?
It'll be someone else's problem too. So, it's, it's, it's interesting how they do that, Mike. There's, so our ladder truck that we sold to So Daisy, Tennessee, is their, it's called their third spare. So, there's, there's organizations out there that have so many spare trucks that they get their ISO rating down and they buy those and they keep them online as a spare, and it doesn't have to meet that high standard. Portland's really never had a single spare.
Do you ever, you have a number of what you sell it for hypothetically? What would you say? Engine two would go for?
In this market, it might go a little higher. I mean, I sold.
Would it be worth it to have it as a spare?
I sold the ladder truck fourteen years ago for thirty thousand dollars, and it was thirty-two years old.
So, would it be worth it to keep it as a spare? Because thirty thousand dollars is not a whole lot of money in the whole scheme of things.
It's not. We'd have to look at that, yeah. We'd have to do a thorough safety analysis, which we do all the time. It might be, you know, we, we're, we're thinking about that for the tanker, but I don't think the tanker is because it has zero safety features in it whatsoever. So, it's almost to the point where we don't really want to put people in it in an emergency mode. It's a little different in a regular traffic mode, but the tanker has no safety equipment in it at all. Engine two does. Engine two definitely does.
What do you, what do you mean by safety equipment?
Oh, the lap belt. Yeah, well, the proper supported lap belts, airbags, you know, the steel dashboard, the steering wheel that's in my, you know, the nineteen fifty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's got a fabric headline, you know, it's an older truck.
Yeah.
It's your typical hard-working, I mean, that, that truck's powerhouse is in good shape. It's just everything around it. So, there's options. There's opportunities there for both. Either reuusage as a spare, you know, our tanker could be used in town as a water truck. You just don't know how long it's going to last when it's not kept inside in an environment that we keep it in and, and the way the guys take care of it. So, those are the other issues. Storage is hard.
A spare truck would have no indoor storage available.
We would be able to store probably one. We might have room at company two, but, you know, we're running out of space. Nothing on the hill, though, that's for sure.
So, I think, you know, I, I know that with the ARPA funds, there's been more flexibility in how the money has been used. But to me, it's always been a sense of trying to use it for either infrastructure or safety. So, I certainly, you know, this falls in line with what I think the way the money should be used. So, you know, and going off of where it's going, the direction of how the expense, how it's increasing, yeah, it's not, it's only going to get worse. So, so I think it's, it's a very viable option of how we use those funds.
I think we should move forward with this because, like Bob said, if we're already looking at, in a couple of years, looking at replacing engine three, I don't want to put the price of two engines on the taxpayers' backs. If we can have the federal money pay for one of them, and then in a couple of years, the taxpayers are paying for another one.
Yeah, that is going to happen, so.
Yeah, it's inevitable.
Inevitable, yeah.
It's, it's, it's going to happen.
I'm not opposed to getting the fire truck. Don't get me wrong. I want to see this with a new truck. We need it. It sounds like we need it. I just want to know how we're going to pay for it. I want, I want Tom's expertise involved. I want him to give us options. Hundred percent ARPA, lease program? Can we do both? Can we just do half and half? I just, I'm scared of using all our ARPA money. And then something else pops up in the next year, and that money would have been more helpful using the ARPA money for that than going out on a, through the taxpayers. That's, I'm just, I want options, that's it.
Right. But one of the things he said and what we ran in against with the tanker is the timeframe for the lease option. And he, we had trouble, or Bob had trouble with Tom on getting that to go through. It wasn't an easy situation.
Again, I want Tom to tell me that. Like, I mean, I'm only talking two weeks till we meet with him again.
Right.
He'll be here at a.
I agree.
November meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, things might change, Mike.
Guys, this is my opinion, expert opinion. I'm a money guy. This is what I feel is the best for the town.
And Bob, you mentioned that, that other information you might have in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, regarding the contract?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're, I'm hoping I have that.
That may have bearing on the discussion we have.
Well, it will because right now, Tom is under the impression, not under the impression, but it's our rules, it's our purchasing rules, as, as well as we've always followed those rules, which are important, that it's a bid process, a fair bid process. I'll tell you this, standing here, to write a bid spec for a fire truck? That's tough. The bid spec for the tanker is three hundred and fifty pages. That takes six months to develop as we're going through and building a truck.
At seven percent increase a month.
So, the bid spec for the engine would be something, hopefully, that would be more of a cab, you know, more of a cachet or a, an engineered design that's out there that they're, they're building that, or such as, give me Glastonbury's engine because it's very similar to what we use and what we want and kind of go off of that to save that time. You know, we're into a whole different world of building trucks that I'm really used to for years. So.
What you're looking for in the engine is, it's pretty much the basic requirement.
That's it.
Six-seater, the tank size, the pump size. There's nothing specific that you need to write the bid spec for. They build every engine with what we're looking for at the minimum.
That's what they're doing now, Bob. They, you know, before they would say, you know, pick your chassis and build your truck. And that's what we would do. We would sit for hours and days and months and we build our truck. You know, what kind of body do you want? Where are your cabinets? What type of tranny? How are you going to lay this? Now, you have most of that spec. And what you're doing is you're changing cabinets and you're moving equipment per se, where you're going to place it. And then you're looking at your pump size. You can change that. But it's changed so much that they're almost, I would say, and John would, pre-engineered vehicles. They're pre-engineered. You got so many to select from. You're going to go rescue pumper, you're going to go straight pumper, you're going to buy a tanker, you got an aerial, you got a bucket. And you're kind of locked to those designs, depending on where you're going to go. So, I guess that makes it easier, but it does take that custom option away for the towns, which we're fine with. Everything's kind of gone the way we've built to that pre-engineered standard. So, we're happy with that.
I have one question. It's about if we did engine three in the future, would it be the same engine? Or would it be a smaller engine like engine three is now?
No, it would have to be, um, engine three will have to be a thousand-gallon pumper on a chassis that will fit in that firehouse.
So, would it be a six-seater?
No.
Okay.
No, because you'd have ten feet behind the cab to fit in that firehouse.
And you have two feet between the bumper and the wall where that truck is.
The tanker's thirty, thirty-four feet long. It's a two-seater, and it just carries three thousand gallons of water. So, that's all volume as far as distance on the axle. So, an engine at eight hundred gallons, that one needs to be a thousand. You're extending your length or your height. We can't do either there, so it's difficult. So, you take, so now you're pushing your water forward and you're losing your seats. So I don't see Engine Three, um, unless it goes, you know, unless something else happens, ever being more than two seats, which is difficult, but that's what it is. If you squeeze four in it, it's gonna be a really tight ride.
Thanks, Bob, and so we, I think we'll table this until, um, uh, until the November second meeting. Um, you know, Tom Robinson will be here at that meeting, I'll tell you, ju- just Mike though, you, we're not able to, you know, mix and match with, with the American Rescue Funds. One, as Bob pointed out, if we were to do a capital lease, we wouldn't even be able to, we'd have to go through the budget cycle and have to wait until July one before we'd even be able to move forward with that. And there are requirements with the American Rescue Funds that, I believe it's, uh, twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-three is when all funds have to be allocated for by, and then I believe it's twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-four that we have to take delivery of anything that's purchased. I, I am hopeful though, that that rule may be changed because I think a lot of municipalities are gonna be in the same boat that we are, where we're waiting on, uh, due to supply chain issues, we're gonna be waiting on various equipment, and, uh, so I'm hopeful that that will change. But just, you know, the American Rescue Funds do need, there, there's rules that have to be followed, and there's a timeline as well.
So Bob, you are available for the next meeting as well, hopefully?
What day is that?
November second.
Yep. Yep, after that.
We have you here and Tom here, hopefully we can get the information we need and we can.
Yeah, I think the key, the key is Tom, his options, and he certainly knows, and he, you know, we, we talked about this an awful lot for many years. And the options that we have and the, what's the best for the town and how, you know, years and how to plan things out, but. I know the lease was difficult this year and things may have changed and he may be able to speak on behalf of that. We used to be able to build a truck in eight months and that's probably never gonna happen.
Bob, can I ask you one thing too? I know Engine Two, Engine Three are, you know, past their life. With the latter in the future, is that something that could be refurbished before it needs major repairs to extend its life?
Yeah, I mean, you, you have to see what, what happens, you know, how it, I mean, it's in great shape, but we run that hard. Um, it's a very, um, versatile truck, it's, it makes driveways, it's, you know, we built that specifically for our type of town. If we need a bucket or a hundred and ten feet, then we call mutual aid and then they're here quick to help us, so we really, when we built that truck, we built it. We, the city of Middletown uses that truck to get down their alleyways because it's such a great truck, so we kinda share that responsibility. If we need a bucket to go up, go up and over, then, um, we, we can certainly, you know, share those, and we try to do that because it's just, it's, like I said, you know, it'd be great to have a bucket truck for the town of Portland, but, you know, that's two million dollars. Flat out, right off the bat, to even think about it, and we don't need it, I mean, you know, we, hm, we have some concerns about Brainerd Place, but not concerns enough to push us in that regard. No, cause we looked at that pretty closely, so, you know, really good water system and sprinklers and stuff there helps the fire department out really good when, we like to see water flowing before we get there.
Are those buildings beyond the reach of ladder?
So the, the one in the back will be very, very close, um, yeah, cause we're only seventy-five feet and, you know, you know, it's, the distance you lose to set up, so you're really not getting a seventy-five foot reach, you're lucky if you get sixty.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, there's some, you know, but the way they're engineering buildings and sprinkling them now, it makes it a lot better, you know, situation for us, so. City Water Two's great.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. Lot to think about, thank you for your time.
And certainly we'll invite Ray, uh, for November second too.
Yeah, yeah, unfortunately Ray, you know, he puts a lot of time into this as well with us, works closely, builds all our trucks with us. And, uh, he just had to work tonight, a lot going on in Bristol, so he's trying to spend a lot of time there and bless those guys and, uh, yeah, so if he's, if he's not available, we'll still bring the same to the table. And like Mike said, it's really a situation for you guys to find out what the best way, um, to do this is with financing. There are a bunch of options, each one of those options has some pitfalls, but gotta figure out what the best is.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bob.
All right. Next up is, uh, the American Rescue Plan Funds, I don't have anything this evening on it, I did ask, at our last meeting, we, we did talk about potentially funding a, uh, senior center van. I asked Lynn, our senior center director was going to come tonight, I, I told her we had a lot on the agenda, so she's going to come on November second, so just, uh, be ready, you know, for that, so we'll discuss that then. Um, so unless any of the selectmen have anything they'd like to talk about, I think we can move on.
The only thing I would mention is that, you know, I've mentioned before was that maybe we would, um, take this opportunity to maybe bring in Officer Malardo to talk about security. And if there's any ways we could use the funding, uh, for security solutions.
I will, I will talk with Captain Malardo and see if we, it would probably be the second meeting in November.
Yeah, I'm just.
But I'll invite him for, uh, most likely executive session on, on security matters, so.
Okay.
Uh, I will do that, Ralph, thank you. All right, so I think we'll move on then to appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. Any appointments?
Uh, we have none.
Any appointments? Okay, great, so we'll move on to new business. Now, uh, next on the agenda is something that I've been working with, uh, our Youth and Family Services Director, Jesse Ravicki, who is here this evening, as well as Sarah Piani, who is in the audience as well. And the discussion has been, Sarah reached out to me, boy, I don't know, a few months back, several months back, and, and brought to my attention that, you know, some of the things that, one, the, uh, Sarah wa- was working with the city of New Britain on, on a lot of initiatives. And, and brought to my attention, um, something about becoming a recovery-friendly community. And that's something that's been on my mind because I do know that, just like every other community in the state and the country, that substance abuse i- is, is a problem in our community, and it's something that, uh, I feel, and I know, you know, I've worked with Jesse and Sarah, that, that we should try to address and, and try to, you know, do more as a community to help those who may be, um, you know, afflicted or suffering from this. And so, uh, Sarah, would you like to come up and, and speak, and Jesse, would you like to come up, I don't know if you wanna come up as well, but?
I'm bringing my.
Oh, yeah, bring it. And there is a, there is a checklist in your packet on what establishing a recovery-friendly community entails. And I'm sure Sarah's about to tell you, you know, some, a lot of this, we've already kinda done, so.
Yes, my name's Sarah Piani, I actually am a former Portland resident, I grew up in this town. And I'm also, I work a full-time and two part-time jobs in the addiction recovery field, and I'm a woman in long-term recovery from the disease of addiction, and I did reach out in, it was like May or June, and I had met with the first selectman and wherever you, Jesse, and we started talking about the process. And we started talking about the numbers, I started pulling the numbers. And from October eighteenth twenty twenty to October eighteenth twenty twenty-one, there were ten suspected overdoses in the town of Portland. Zero fatalities and nine were given naloxone, which we know as Narcan. October nineteenth twenty twenty-one to October eighteenth twenty twenty-two, twenty suspected overdoses, nine of them were suspected fatalities and ten doses of the Narcan were given. And we literally watched that number go up and went like a month, two months, we watched it jump up like three people. And the recovery-friendly community, the purpose of that is to break the stigma. To let people know that there, it's okay to say you have a problem, it's okay to ask for help. And Jesse actually has Narcan in his office now, and we started going through this checklist and they're almost there, they're, you guys really are almost there, there's not much on there. So the next phase of this is, I brought some friends with me, Chrissy and Mark, they're both Portland residents and they are both willing to help through this process as well. And the next step is just to finish up the checklist and I spoke to someone at the meeting, the three of us were at today, about getting DMS involved. I'm going to loop them in on an email so that we can get you guys designated as a recovery-friendly community. And so people know there's a safe place they can come, they can say, listen, I have an issue, I need to get help, Jesse can say, I'm always referring for Jesse, well, let me make some phone calls, they can call, if they need to, they can call Mark, they can call Chrissy, and they can, Mark can share a little bit about.
I don't, um, I don't know exactly what I could add at this point, other than, um,
Step up some mic, please.
Other than Sarah had approached me and asked me if I would get involved in this initiative, um, which I'm more than happy to do, so I think in, um, in this day and age, I think we would be hard pressed to pretty much look at any family who isn't somehow directly or indirectly impacted by a member who is struggling in some shape or form, uh, with a mental illness, or in this case, uh, the disease of addiction, so. Um, you know, I think it's really difficult, we're, we're kind of seeing that we're fighting this, um, this battle. We came out of, uh, I think a time when, uh, the opiate epidemic, uh, was, um, I, you know, not, I don't wanna use the word produced, but we all know what came from some of the pharmaceutical companies. Our treatment has, um, changed. And we've moved into a, a harm reduction phase now, which, um, on some level, if you look at just saving people's lives, okay, that works, um, but we're not looking to just save people's lives, because see, you can heal from this, you can change, you can regain your status, you, you can have a life, right? And I think that, um, the reason that I'm looking forward to, moving forward with Sarah and, and the town with this is that I think the information needs to be, um, explained and, uh, produced in a way that people fully understand that because someone suffers from a drug addiction, um, that is not their only problem, right? There's a lot of different drugs that are out there that are misused, some are psychological, some are psychological and physical. Uh, nonetheless, uh, it forms a behavioral pattern. So even though the drugs may, uh, be removed, the behavioral patterns and the way that, that someone who struggles is not. Um, and, and I think it's important that, um, we could easily put together teams of people who, you know, would be more than, uh, happy to, um, there's a lot of different venues that I'm a part of, certified and licensed in many different ways, recovery coaching and otherwise, that um, I think would be beneficial. I think, you know, people are not overly excited about coming out and, and saying, hey, I'm, I'm struggling, right? They, they wanna believe in their hearts that they can do this on their own, um, that it is something that they can control and, and get out of at any given moment, and that's not the case. That's not, that's really truly the lie that's, that they tell themselves. Um, and without the proper help, without someone that they can identify with, that they can share and talk with, the chances of them ever finding true freedom from that is heavily reduced. And, and I think, um, I think we have an opportunity here to change that. And, um, I, you know, I will do whatever I can to move forward in this, so.
That's great.
That's, that's really all I have.
Yeah, so I guess, um, you know, thank you, and that was well said. Um, I think what we're trying to do at Youth and Family Services, um, we run the local prevention council, uh, which we're calling This Is Us Portland, um, Prevention and Wellness Council. And we're funded through state grants, um, to do some work. Um, right now, it's a lot focused on vaping, but we also have money through the opioid settlements that we wanna focus on as well. A lot of it is really targeted towards youth prevention, but also towards, um, you know, recovery in general. Um, and we had a, a really good, um, first meeting last month, um, and we have another one next week on Wednesday the twenty-sixth at six-thirty downstairs, um, in our, our office downstairs. And, uh, anybody who's interested in, in coming and being a part of that, I, we welcome you.
Thank you, Jesse. Yeah, and we are looking for more people, uh, to get involved, it's, uh, I was at the last, the first meeting and, uh, it's a good group, but, you know, so feel free to join, but I guess I, I, I just wanna open up, I'd like to ask the selectmen what, you know, looking at this, at this checklist of what, what it means to be a recovery-friendly community, is this something that you think is, is, is worth doing, or, you know, like, what are your thoughts on it?
I think so.
Hundred percent.
Um, I see it on the other side, I'm a EMR firefighter. Uh, those numbers you mentioned, I was probably at more than half of them. If you look at my license number, it comes up a lot with using Narcan. Um, and it's pretty sad when you, multiple times the same patient and then that one time you say, uh, you know, he's on the, you know, he dies, so I totally agree with this, um, we are a Narcan leave-behind town, I don't know if you know about that program? And, uh, which is, uh, we just started on that, uh, end of September, so that will help. Anybody can walk up to us and anybody can ask for it on scene, and we leave behind a Narcan, one dose of Narcan, a pamphlet, we, um, show them how to use it. And they have a CPR instructions and a whole, you know, CPR mask, so we just started with that, which is part of, uh, chat and help.
So I, I, I certainly support it as well, I mean, I would think, unfortunately, I think the numbers are just gonna continue to grow where we're at right now, I don't know what's gonna break that cycle. But right now, I think we're on a climbing cycle and hopefully it'll end at some point. Um, the only question I had is obviously, there was some review done of this checklist already and it sounds like we're pretty close. It would have been nice if we had the yes or the, like, where we are at, so we know where we're short. That would have been nice to know.
Well, one A is, is short at the moment, so the town council and the board of directors. So that's part of the reason why we're here.
Oh, okay.
It's to, you know, is to get the board of selectmen's approval on this, because it is, not only is it one of the steps, but it's, it's important to, you know, to get the support of, of you all so that we have the support of the community as well. And I'll, I'll just say, before I, I was first selectman, uh, I was town clerk. And one of the duties of the town clerk is you're in charge of the vital records for the town. And you, you do see, you know, the death certificates and they, and it does list the, the cause of death and, and, you know, there's nothing sadder than, you know, looking at that cause of death and, and I can't say how many times, you know, it, you know, opiates or, or, you know, alcohol or, is some, some substance was involved, but it, it, it happens more than you think, and, uh, it's, it's never, it's never good when it does, so. Anything that we can do to stop that, I think is a good thing.
I couldn't agree more, I mean, I've been involved with families in town like Jesse is now for a long, long time, and I think all of us have seen the effect in other people, and after the last two years of the COVID and, and what we've kinda learned, at least at my end, is that we need to take care of each other better and as a town, as a community, as groups of families, we need to do everything we can to help each other out. And, uh, addiction is stronger than the strongest willpower, right? And, um, I think we're aware of that more now than ever before, so I'm happy to help in any way I can, I'd love to be part of this thing in any way I can. Uh, we should do as a town, everything we can as well, and we've all seen it, we've all seen the effects, so. I'm glad you guys are coming forward too, it's a hard thing to do.
And thank you, Mark and Chrissy, for coming tonight too and getting involved. And obviously, Sarah, who's been a champion for Jesse and I getting this started. And, and so I, I guess what I'd ask the Board of Selectmen is, is if someone would like to make a motion that, you know, in support of moving forward with the town of Portland becoming a recovery-friendly community.
I'd like to make that. You just said it, didn't you? I'd like to make a motion that Portland becomes a recovery-friendly community going forward in all the ways that we need to do that.
And I'll second that motion. Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you both. Any discussions? Any further discussion?
Let's check off number one.
Ryan, four, not, I mean, it could be a future meeting, but I'm wondering if you could take this document and get it completed. Like we said, at least we know what areas we've already complied with, what areas we need to work on, if, if something like that is available, if you've gone through it. It'd be nice to see that document.
We kind of started already.
Yeah, we did, we, I would say eighty percent of it was like, pretty much done and
You want to check it off before you leave?
We'll have it.
I can't remember which ones Ryan had put.
It's, in reading the document, it seems to me like there is, a lot of this is just reaching out to all the entities that are listed and blending together as a team. Because I, I noticed we talk about police and fire in schools, obviously, and you, Jesse. But then I, I noticed it mentions doctors' offices, it mentions faith communities, you know, and I know, I'm sure most everybody in town, doctors and our churches and everything, have some involvement. It's just a matter of pulling all of us together and making sure we're all following the same set of rules and we have contacts and.
So, one of the reasons I had Jesse and the first selectman come with me today to New Britain, to the New Britain Recovers Opioid Task Force meeting is I wanted you guys to actually see what that meant, bringing everyone to the table. That includes people with lived experience, people in recovery, providers, faith-based, doctors, everyone who's, and we also, I want to say
Police chief was there as well.
The police and the fire chief are always there usually. I don't know why the fire chief wasn't there. The EMS chief, he was there.
Is Demis at the table too?
There, actually, yes. There was someone there from Demis today as well. And there was also, were there two aldermen, I think?
At least one. I think there were two.
Yes, because the gentleman came in later, the one who shared. So, it's just bringing everyone to the table and getting different perspectives. Because what a provider can suggest and what a person with lived experience who's been through it, so totally different. So, just like Mark was saying, recovery, coaching, peer support, that's a key. That's a huge key to it.
And I agree with what Mark, you said earlier, that it would be hard-pressed to find somebody that doesn't have it somewhere in his circle, family, friends, neighbors. And I, I have a few cases in my inner circle and it, I know it's, it's terrible on the individual. It's, it's brutal on the family. And I, I know that when, thank God, when they get everything together and they're on the road to recovery, it's like the stars are aligned. But to get there, it, it's a difficult thing. And I think this is great.
I believe we have a motion.
And a second.
And a second. So, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of Portland becoming a recovery-friendly community signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Thank you all. All right. And Sarah and Jesse, we have more work to do, so. All right, sounds good. Thank you, guys. All right, we can move on to refunds of excess payments.
Okay, Bobby, you're up.
Yep. Make a motion for refund of excess payments for Adam A. Simpewitz for thirty-six dollars and twenty-one cents.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for refund of excess payment, Toyota Lease Trust, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety-three cents.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for refund of excess payments for Raymond Jolby Jr. and Jacqueline Jolby, twenty-one dollars and forty-four cents.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Thank you. Bobby and Ralph? So, Status and Committee Reports is next. I have a couple things I want to talk about is, one, I, I think everyone here was at the Portland Fair, which was back for its first time in a few years. I, I know I saw Net there. And I just want to say thank you to the Fair Committee for all of the work that went into that fair. And I'm so happy for them because I think, I think when the numbers come out, I think they're going to be well in the black. So.
You guys, you, you know, I mean, I, I was involved in that. I helped start it back up and I think I was involved for about seventeen years. And I'll tell you, when you go to the fair and you see the fair itself, there is so much that goes on behind the scenes, setup, takedown and everything else. I mean, it's, the volunteers in that are, I know what's involved and I just can't say enough for them. They did an amazing job.
They did. And I just want to point out that not only did they do an amazing job, but they ma, they did an amazing job with a skeleton crew. And so, if anyone's watching this meeting and would like to get involved in the Portland Fair Association, they are, they're looking for volunteers. So, I encourage you to do so. I'd also like to point out that it's October and there are a lot of great events coming up in the town of Portland. So, Jesse Ravicky just left, but he's been instrumental in putting this flyer together with all of these events. We have a, on, on October twenty-first, from four to seven PM, there's a costume donation and swap. So, right here in the Buck Foreman Community Center. So, if anyone or any, anyone's children needs costumes for Halloween, they can, or, or have some that they would like to donate, they can come and, and join the swap. So, that's a great event. And you'll need a costume because on October twenty-eighth, which is a Friday, from four to seven PM, Halloween on Main is, is back. As a town-sponsored event this year was, went on hiatus during COVID. So, you know, thankfully, it's, it's back again. So, I encourage everyone here to attend. There'll be lots of candy and I'm sure, I'd like to see some of the selectmen in costumes. I think that would be great. And if, and if you're not going to dress up in a, in a costume on Friday, that Saturday, ten twenty-nine, is a five K run. So, I think if you're not going to do the costume, you should at least do the five K run. I plan on running it. That starts at nine thirty AM. That's a Saturday. It'll be at Riverfront Park. Mike, you running?
I am. I'm, I'm actually making all my, all my cross-country kids do it too.
Awesome.
So, they've been voluntold.
Great, great. So, and then after that, there, there's going to be a monster march in the Riverfront Park from twelve to two PM. And this is a, a march with children a, as well as pets in costumes are going to parade around. And I believe EDC also has an event that they're working on too. I know Michelle Donahue, it's not on the flyer, but EDC will be there on Saturday as well.
With the Saturday, I, I know that the discussion with the trick-or-treat was to try to reach out to the businesses on Route sixty-six to try to bring them in and get them to either go in with a business on Main or to take an area on Main where there's open areas to be able to give out candy and be able to talk about their businesses. So.
I know we've done, yeah, we've reached out. So, hopefully we'll get some businesses. We don't want to leave anybody out. So, I think that was a good idea for Route sixty-six businesses to be able to participate.
And it's on the website too?
And it's on the, there it is. It's on our website. So, I do want to give a couple updates on some of the projects that we have going on. Bob Shea just left, but I had a meeting with him and our superintendent, Dr. Britton, last week, along with us, other staff, Tom Robinson was there. And we met on the, on the track replacement at the high school. So, I just want to let you know where we're at with that. So, now we've, we've signed on, thanks to this board, with SLR, who is the engineering architecture firm that's going to be designing the track. And we had a meeting with them last week and things are moving quickly at, at this pace now. So, it's, it's great to see some updates from SLR. One is that they are actually going to be onsite surveying the track this week.
They were out there today.
They were out there today. Boom, there you go. So, they're, they're surveying the track this week. That'll get the, more information that they need to put this, this RFP together. The bad news that they informed us was that the track is in even worse shape than, than we thought it was. And so, there's, there's several different options. It, it's premature to, to tell you all what the options are, but we're looking at a full replacement, milling, paving, and then re-milling and paving the entire track and then either spraying or using that, that, that rubber. And, and there's, there's options, there's all sorts of different options of the rubber that you can use, all the way up to Olympic Rubber, but we're not going to use that. We're going to find something a little more cost-effective. But, but it's exciting. And just to give you guys some, some estimated timetables, we're looking to have the RFP out, well, completed by the end of December and probably out, out by the end of December is, is what we're shooting for. Because that way, and once that RFP is, is created, we should have some estimated prices too. It'll, you know, at least rough prices. So, we're going to go out over the winter for that. And we should have it lined up so that we are ready to go in early spring, hopefully as soon as, and we even talked about potentially starting while school was still in session. I, I don't think that'll happen. I think it's going to be as soon as, as soon as school ends, they're going to be in there replacing the track. And it's going to take about, it's about a three-month process. And so, unfortunately, while they're replacing the track, we're not going to be able to use the, the soccer field that's in the center of the track. So, that's something to keep in mind. But it's looking like, you know, as long as we can get the construction lined up, that we should be ready for the beginning of fall sports. So, that is, that is the goal. And, and yeah, so we're, we're excited about that. So, I just want to give everybody an update. The other, the other item that I wanted to update you on was our kitchen renovation at the Senior Center. We have a, a grant from the Department of Housing for seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. This includes basically a replacement of the kitchen that's there and also HVAC improvements and the installation of a generator at the Senior Center. And so, right now, this is out to bid. We had a non-mandatory pre-bid conference on Monday and we had, it was, it was really well-attended. So, I'm really hoping that we'll get a lot of bids in and we'll get a competitive price and we'll, we'll find somebody that, you know, is, is great to work with. So, I'm, I'm excited about that. And this could, this could begin, the work on the Senior Center could begin as early as December, maybe late December, most likely early twenty-twenty-three. And again, that'll be at least twelve weeks, at least during, during that construction. And so, we're working with Lynn Tracy, our Senior Center Director, is working on plans during that time to get out meals, meals and wheels and, and different programs for, for the elderly and those in need. So, we're working on that. We'll work through it, but that's moving along as well. So, I just want to let everyone know. I got an update on our Riverfront Park and Trail project. That's the three hundred thousand dollars that we received from the State Bond Commission to clear the land, which was the, once the field property outside of Airline Avenue. And I was told that the documents are now, there's a contract that DEEP has put together, and the documents are now with the Attorney General's Office. So, we're hoping that they review them soon because once we get an executed contract, then we can actually use the money and get reimbursed. Right now, although we, we've been awarded that, that three hundred thousand, we can't spend anything. We can't, we can't do much with it until we get approval. So, that's moving forward as well. The brownstone avenue remediation is still underway. I've been working with Ty and Bonn. And we're, we're working on a solution to, to make sure that we have fill for the site. And we're looking at different options. So, it's still, it's still in the works. It, it hasn't been completed yet, but we're excited for that. And I think those are, those are all the
Anything new and interesting at Brainer Place?
I don't have any real update on, on Brainer Place. I, I spoke with Dan Bertram on Friday. You know, we, we typically touch base on Fridays. I need to talk with him again because my plan is to bring forward a amended fixed assessment agreement to this board for November second meeting. And that would be an executive session. And our attorney from Shipman and Goodwin is coming to that meeting as of right now. But I, I don't have that document that, you know, so we got
So, executive session would be a subset of this meeting on November second?
Correct.
Because we, we have the fire truck discussion coming on the second. And you also mentioned the van discussion too. So, it's going to be a
It'll be a busy
Heavy-duty one.
Yeah, well, probably if we do have the executive session, and I think we will, I think we might want to put that in the beginning of the meeting.
Agreed.
And, and, you know, especially because we have to pay the attorney fees. So, we might as well pay as little as possible, right?
Good thinking.
So, but good question. Yeah, that's all. I don't have any, any update. I know that the developer, they're working with our building department or land use department on finalizing the documents that they need in order to begin the foundation.
They got some large equipment moving earth around down here now.
Yeah, they're digging the trenches for the main and the drainage. Guy knows, doing a lot of work there, running one of the machines. And the guy go down some parts pretty deep. He said, when they bring the main up from, down the road, down by where Charlie's wagon, when they bring it up, you'll see where it's, then it's going to cut across. And I think that ease, I think in through that, before the gas station's going to come across through there, that property, that open space we have. He says some parts of it, they're going to have to double stack.
Yeah, you're right. I see all the trucks heading right down to that corner. That makes sense. Yeah.
All right. Well, that's, that's what I have. I'll probably turn it over to Ralph.
Actually, you kind of stole some of my thunder because obviously we went through all the events, which every group I seem to be involved with has something to do with those events. So, Park and Rack, certainly the, the discussion, most of the discussion this, this week was related to the five K and making sure everything is ready for the five K. And just making sure we have people there for the, for trick-or-treating. EDC I was not at, but I know that their discussion did center on those events and as well as talking about the tree lighting and potentially lip parade, lighting, parade in the beginning of December. So, I'm sure there'll be more to follow, but obviously concentrating on the fall events first. And then the third thing was water and sewer, which we had also this week. And there was a good discussion about, I know, the last meeting, we had seen a presentation by a company that produces meters. And so, Dave came back with numbers for a potential pilot of, you know, installing fifty meters or a hundred meters. And, you know, it's something that Dave will be discussing in future meetings to try to decide how to get, what to do with that. But it gave us a good opportunity to see how the equipment works. It's not just mechanical meters. There's advanced meters that offer a lot of capabilities to help us with finding leaks that may exist in the system. And there was some discussion about water rates. You know, we had a good surplus for water and sewer this past stretch. And, you know, coming up after the audit, we'll hopefully know the numbers for, you know, with regards to the newest numbers and where we're at. And so, we'll have to see how that progresses. So, library is tomorrow, so.
Thank you, Ralph. Any, anyone else?
The School Facilities Committee met on Monday. They've finished all their focus groups. The architects came back in, discussed some ideas. The architects came back in, discussed some ideas. They're hoping to have something, probably sometime after New Year's, for like a recommendation to go to the Board of Ed first, and then come to us with what their idea would be.
Great. Anyone else on status and committee reports? All right, we'll move on to public comment. The audience kinda cleared out here.
Nothing in the chat.
Nothing in the chat, okay. So we will move on to general informal discussion.
The project, Russell Avenue, down that with water, any update on what's going on with that?
I don't have an update on the Russell Avenue project. The, right now, the push has been on the, the pump at the town garage, the fuel pump, and making sure, because that's kind of our priority one right now, because if that pump goes down, you know, we'd be in trouble. So we wanna make sure, you know, we can get that replaced. So again, we're, we've, Tom and I reached out to multiple towns about. The question with this project is, because it's American Rescue Funds and because they're federal funds, the question is, can we, can we use our town engineer for that, or do we have to go out to bid? And that's been, that's been the question, and we've gotten mixed responses from different towns. And so, we may ultimately have to bid that, you know, unfortunately, because although we have. So, so that's kind of where, where that is with that project. So it's, it's gonna happen. I know Ryan O'Halpin is working on that as well. But again, we just have to cross our Ts and dot our Is when it comes to any time you use federal money.
But they don't obviously have a help line or anything, because it seems like all the answers we're trying to get for this American Rescue Plan money is like pulling teeth, trying to find out which way to go.
Yeah, because on one hand, the, you know, the act was to get this money in the hands of municipalities as quickly as possible. But then, on the other side, you still have federal procurement rules that you have to follow. So, you know, we wanna just make sure that we're following it. Obviously, we always know we have to go out to bid for the construction.
Right.
But it's really the design that we, that's really what we need to double-check on. So that's what we're, that's what we're waiting for still. I don't, I don't have a definitive answer on that yet. Bobby?
Well, you answered a lot of my questions with your little speech. Are they still moving forward, looking into the alarm at the garage?
Yes.
I know they said it was being done.
It is being done. That's another, so just keep in mind, every, every project that has to go out to bid has to go through, and the bid has been created.
Okay.
But it's, it just has to go through that process, and this is one of the things that I think we'll have to talk about, you know, when we, when we get to maybe budget season, just, just looking at, you know, the functions of, of, you know, the town hall, and looking at ways that maybe we can provide some assistance for our finance director, who, you know, has a lot on his plate already. So all the, each one of these projects is, it ultimately ends up in Tom Robinson's hands, and, and there's just a lot. So, so that's where, you know, it's going to happen. We're, it's, after the fuel pumps, you know, that's, that's the next, the next thing that. Right now, it's the fuel pumps, because we wanna get that just completed. So that, that bid, that RFP's been created, and it's, it's ready to be issued, so that should be issued very, very soon.
Okay. And that's the same thing, I mean, I know we're going into winter, but that's gonna be the same issue with the sidewalks.
Yeah.
So hopefully, we can do some construction with them next year.
So the sidewalks, I'm glad you mentioned sidewalks. So we actually have, we have two sidewalk projects going on in the town. One is the STEAP grant that we were awarded back in September, and that was the four hundred thousand dollars for sidewalks on Main Street. I don't have any news on that. That still has to make its way through OPM, and, and then we have to go through the same process. It's a STEAP grant, so no news has happened on that. But there's another grant that the town was awarded previously, while Susan was first selectwoman, and that was a connectivity grant, and that's for sidewalks on Airline Avenue, I believe Riverside Street, Fairview.
With that High Street for six and seven.
High Street, High Street to sixty-six, yeah. And so those plans have been with our town engineer, and so Jacobson Associates, and they just have been finalized as of, as of last week, and they were to Jeff Jacobson to review. So that was, once he reviews those plans, they go to DOT. And so, our hope is that DOT doesn't take too long getting back to us. So ideally, we would like them to complete their review over the winter, so that we can go out to bid and, and get that, get those sidewalks, and get, get a good price while, while people are looking for that type of work. So we're hopeful that that will be in, in the spring. That would be great. So I'm glad you mentioned sidewalks, because that's, we're getting a lot closer on that.
That's why I'm here. For the old Tomaso Field, I know they have the old bleachers down there. Does the town have any plans with them?
We have no plans with the bleachers. We looked at it. Nate Foley looked at that. We, we potentially looked at it for the Portland Recreational Complex, but they're just old. You know, you don't wanna put older bleachers in a brand-new park. It's gonna stick out like.
Yeah. As I say, if, if we don't have a use form, and the fence is gone now, do we wanna dispose of them before either someone takes them and cuts them up for scrap, or someone gets hurt on them?
Yeah.
I'm just saying, because the fence is gone, so it's open field just to go up to them.
Yeah. Yeah, I, we can, I can talk with Ryan O'Halpin about, you know, getting rid of the bleachers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a short list.
Any, any, I just, I just have one question. He inspired me with all the questions he had. How are we looking with all the activities we have with Parks and Rec? It's kinda, I guess, for you, Brian, and.
Ralph.
Yeah, I know. It's been a long day. Parks and Rec, it sounds like we've been able to take care of all the work there, given the situation we have. Does that look like we'll, we'll be fine in the months ahead?
Yeah. No, I, I'll say Andy Dion, who's the assistant over there, has been doing, or he's the program coordinator, I should say. That's his job title. He's been doing a wonderful job over there, and, you know, it's not easy, you know, you know, in a department by yourself, but, you know, Andy's been doing a great job. And, and so, yeah, we've, we've been able to move, move forward, and, and so, yeah, all the programs are still moving ahead. So we'll, you know, we'll have more news on that as, as time goes on, but we are, we are in okay shape there.
Sounds good.
Is that the one, you're trying to replace someone already?
Not trying to replace anyone, nope. There's a temporary position open while, while someone's on leave.
Yeah, so, anybody filled that or not?
We're, we're still in that process. So, no, it has not been filled, but.
Any applicants?
Yes, there, there have been applicants for the temporary position, so.
How long's that position for?
Until the director returns.
How has the work been going with the building department, moving forward with the modernization and stuff?
Good. I, I spoke with Dan Barrack, the planner, last week on this, and he's aiming to have the RFP for the, the first step was the digitization of the land records. He's hoping to have that, or he's expecting to have that by the end of October. So I, because I don't wanna spend a lot of time, you know, we gotta get this up and running, so Dan knows that. He's working on it, so we, we should get that soon. And then, we just are also having a conversation on our GIS system, which is the second piece of the puzzle, and then the online permit, which is the third phase, which will allow credit card payments in that department as well. So we're, we're all moving ahead. Just, we gotta take one thing at a time, but yes.
I know we asked before in the tax department, have we looked at any options that are free to pay online, like e-check or, you know, debit payments and stuff? Because I think every option we have, there's a fee.
There is a fee, but there's a, there's a fee because all the, all, there's always a fee. And whenever you pay for anything with a credit card, there's a fee, except the merchants typically, you know, take on that fee. But when it, when it's a municipality or a state agency, we, we can't, we can't absorb that fee. So that's why we have to pass, and, and it's just a direct pass to the vendor. Now, there are, and that's why it's, we use point and pay in the tax office, and it's a two-dollar fee or two-and-a-half percent, whichever is greater, and it's the same in the clerk's office uses point and pay as well. No matter what, you, you may be able to look for another, you know, vendor that has maybe a lower percentage, but it's, you're never gonna eliminate the fee. There are other options, like an e-check, I think is cheaper, and we do accept e-check. I think it's like a flat fee for that in the tax office. I don't have the number, I wanna say it's like ten dollars for an e-check, no ma, you know, but, but.
So there's really, there's no free option? Everything has?
There's really no, you can't just Venmo your taxes, unfortunately.
Why don't we have Venmo? Apple Pay?
Someone's still paying a fee on that.
Yeah, so it, it's just not, it's just not an option. Unfortunately, we have to pass whatever fee that.
Oh, I understand. I just didn't know if there was an option that we didn't have. That's all.
Not, to my knowledge, if, you know, we can look into it. I, I've looked into it in the past. I, the same when I was town clerk, I wanted to know if we could get a lower rate for people. But it's, it's one of those things that you're gonna be paying somebody, and it is, and they're pretty much all competitive, so.
I know we talked about it before with the new public works director. Is he gonna come in sometime? Kind of for like a meet and greet, and now that he's got his feet wet, we can ask him what he thinks of the public works department.
He's only been here a couple of months.
But yeah, now.
I was fixing my.
Why? I just wanna know, you know, maybe he can say, the town has been doing this right, they've been doing this wrong, and start to get a feedback on which way he would like to see things go.
I think, I think Ryan should, should join us at a meeting. I think our next meeting is probably not the right one. But let's, I would say, let's try for maybe the, the first meeting in December.
That's fine.
Come and, and give a general update, but also, there's also projects that, you know, he's probably gonna be here anyway to talk about. So, so yeah, no, that's a good idea.
Okay.
All right. I don't have anything under follow-up items this evening, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Nine thirty on the.
Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
I thought it was gonna be a time.